Good evening. I'd like to call the workshop for this evening, July 30th, for the town council. Before we start the meeting, I'm going to ask Jerry Short to lead us in our prayer this evening, and then H.G. Cole will lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance at your stand.
Father in heaven, we are so thankful for this day over, so thankful for the blessings you've given us, Father. We're thankful for the ability and the privilege to live in a town as this, Father, blessings bestowed upon us, Lord. Father, I pray for those that protect us. I pray for the fire and the police, Father, to be with them. What I pray for the teachers, Father, is they are getting back, ready to go back to school, and just ask that you be with them, and just watch over them, watch over the students as they go back to school, Lord. Father, I just, I pray that you'll be with us tonight during this meeting, Lord, and just give us wisdom and open our minds to be able to just comprehend the things that are going to be said and the things that are going to be done, Lord, and just help us to do the right things, Lord. And I pray that we'll just do them in accordance with your will. Father, for those who have lost loved ones this week and the last week, I pray for them, Lord. I pray for the Clark family and just ask you to be with them and just comfort them during this time, Lord. Father, just, I just pray now that it will just be a blessing to you, Lord. I just pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry, and H.G. We have a little bit of a lengthy list tonight, so I'm going to get started with item number one. For the public that's watching or paying attention, we'll read through these, and we'll have the appropriate department director come up and speak to that subject. So, item number one, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 49, parcel 3.01, and Tax Map 34, parcel 50, 5.00, from R1 to C2, requested by St. Luke's Catholic Church. These properties contain 14.6 and 5.4 acres respectively, and are located at 10682 and 10768 Old Nashville Highway. This is our second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is a, is a second reading. Nothing has changed on this since you looked at it at first reading. It is a request just to rezone the two tracts of land owned by the church from R1 to C2. This is primarily to facilitate some additional signage on their building. The rules for commercial districts are different from residential districts, and so that's primarily what they're asking for, why they're asking for. Again, the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
All right. Any questions from the council on any of this? All right, move on to item number two, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28G, Group A, parcel 100, from R4 to C2, requested by Spring House Worship and Art Center. Property contains approximately 5.91 acres, and it's located at 14119 Old Nashville Highway. This too is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a very similar request as the previous request. It is to be rezone from R4 to C2 for very similar reasons regarding signage. This planning commission did review it and did recommend it to you.
Any questions for Kevin? All right, item number three, consideration of an ordinance relative to amending the existing PRD for property located on Tax Map 34, part of parcel 5204, requested by Loz Bolden. Property contains approximately eight and a half acres and is located on Legacy Drive. This is a second reading.
This is an amendment to an existing approved PRD. Fifty-two townhouses are approved in this development. There were four recommended changes that were requested by the developer and were recommended by planning commission, and it would be some changes to the architectural elevations, but the required materials would remain the same, which are brick, hardy, and stone. The minimum building square footage will be reduced from 1,700 to 1,657. All bedrooms would be upstairs instead of having a master bedroom downstairs, and all units would have a two-car garage instead of a mix of one and two-car garages. Again, none of this is any changes from your first reading, and again, the planning commission did review this and did recommend it.
I think all the buffering and fencing and everything remain the same.
Yes.
I think H.G. asked a question last, last reading about the double-wide driveways, and that's all been addressed as well, so.
Right.
All right, any other comments or questions for Kevin on this item? If not, we'll move to number four, consideration of an ordinance relative to amending the existing PUD for properties located on Tax Map 28F, Group A, parcels 2901 and 4706, requested by Stephen and Alicia Burkett. Properties contain approximately 23.61 acres and are located at 729 Rock Springs Road. This is a second reading.
Yeah, this is a amendment to an existing approved PUD, which was approved. There's an existing single-family house on the property, was approved originally for, to add the use of a photography studio there, and after that, the church was added. And now this request would add a wedding or event venue, airsoft course, as well as livestock agricultural use to the property. Access will be from the existing entrance onto Rock Springs Road. He proposed the event venue as to utilize the existing barn on site, but they were going to remodel it into like an open-air pavilion. Airsoft course will be located behind the house, and the livestock agricultural use would be in the open area south of South Woods Drive. The fire department has concerns about accessing structures that are on this property due to the driveway and the bridge on the property being inadequate for their equipment. A fire hydrant would need to be added within 400 feet of the wedding or event venue, and the parking area would be required to be a paved surface and not gravel. So, any, any development of this property to add these uses, those concerns and issues would have to be addressed and would have to be upgraded, and that would have come through with when the site plan is submitted for development. The planning commission did review this and did recommend it to you, and again, there's really no changes to this from first reading.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Any questions on this one? We had a few questions last time come up. Just want to make sure we cover those again if we need to.
I'd just like to see more detailed drawings on it. I don't feel like this.
Yeah, I think that was mentioned before.
Exactly.
I know Chief had some concerns too with the ingress, egress and ingress of the property, the bridge, and so forth, so. All right, any others?
Anybody called you on this anymore?
I've actually talked to Ms. Burkett since last meeting, and I've also had some neighbors, yes, primarily along South Woods Drive has been the, most of the calls that I've been getting on that side of the property, and primarily noise concerns with the event venue has been the primary concern that I've heard. Folks that have called me, I haven't received a lot of calls, but the ones that I have heard, that's been the primary concern.
Was most of your calls concerns or something for, or just?
The ones that have called me have been concerns. Again, there haven't been very many, but they have been concerns.
Any others? All right, move to item five, discussion relative to an ordinance amendment of the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article 4, Section 4.030, Temporary Use Regulations. Kevin, you got that one?
I do. Brian, did you want anything? Okay. At the last council meeting, there was discussion about the food trucks and different ways we may want to look at this, and so you all had asked us to go back and take a look at our ordinance and then come back to you with recommendations. And so what this is before you tonight is what we, the committee came up with, which was, I was involved, Mr. Burkettley and Mr. Spearman were involved, as well as Ms. Farrell and Holland in the administration office as well. And so we did review this and did provide some recommendations to you. We did review many, several of our surrounding neighboring cities, Murfreesboro, Brentwood, Franklin, Spring Hill, Lebanon, Hendersonville, and Gallatin. What we found is, most people handle this very differently than we do. Us in Murfreesboro, very similar, other than Murfreesboro does allow for more days, but they do require a BZA review. Most communities actually treat this as an administrative permit, very similar to any type of building permit or any other type of permit like that. The rules are different in various cities, obviously, but that is how they handle it from a, from a base standpoint. And in reviewing those cities, and I did talk to several of them, as well as looked at some of their information that they have on their websites and those kind of things, what we found is the most comprehensive review, or most comprehensive ordinance we found was from Brentwood. And so I did model what is recommended to you off of Brentwood's requirements. It's not exact verbatim, certainly. We did change it to fit more what we think is best, but there is, the basic idea is modeled based on Brentwood's requirements. So, in general, it would be a change. The Board of Zoning Appeals will no longer review these. It would be an administrative permit that would come through the planning department. There would be a fee. The fee is not established in the ordinance. We didn't want to put it in the zoning ordinance, so if you needed to change the fee, perhaps change the zoning ordinance, it would just be a part of the fee schedule that you look at every year on your, on your budget. Our recommendation is $200, and it would be an annual fee. We are, would administer this for this first 2020, that we would prorate that since this would be a brand-new thing, but beginning in 2021, that it would be a $200 fee for a year. Fee would be doubled if someone is occupying without a permit, and then we also have food truck rallies, which we would recommend have a fee of $300. The changes, I was trying to highlight, just hit the highlights there. There's a few changes that we had to change to our existing ordinance regarding this, since we're changing it to an administrative fee or permit instead of a BZA. That's first part of that, is a few minor changes there. Obviously, there's several definitions just to cover everything as far as what we're doing, and there's just some general provisions, like you can't operate in the right-of-way and those kind of things. There are kind of separate provisions for food trucks in residential areas and in non-residential areas. In residential, again, you have to have permission from the property owner or HOA. You have to be on a parcel that has improvements. It can't just be a vacant tract. You just have to have parking and those kind of things. No more than two can operate at any location. You have to clean up and leave at the end of the day, and you're restricted in hours, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For non-residential property, again, some very similar requirements overall, C2 and C3 districts only. You, again, no more than two. Hours of operation in those two districts would be 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. if it's a 24-hour business that you're located at. If it's otherwise, it would be the same as whatever the business is operating. And you can be there no more than 40 days in any calendar year. We also have some recommendations. Again, this is kind of mirroring what Brentwood has regarding canteen trucks and ice cream trucks. Canteen trucks are just trucks that don't actually prepare food. They just sell pre-prepared sandwiches and those kind of things, can operate on construction sites at 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then ice cream trucks, we do allow for ice cream trucks to operate within the right-of-way, but they can't just sit up at one location. They have to move no more than 15 minutes to be in one location, and they have to face the same direction as traffic. They can't serve onto the road. They have to serve on the curb side, those kind of things. And we do allow for them to operate as, on private property, just like a food truck, if they wanted to do that as well. We have some requirements just as far as the vehicles themselves, and they have to have, you know, fire extinguishers in their vehicles and those kind of things. Just some other kind of basic insurance requirements and those, that type of stuff. We do have some signage limitations. And then, as far as the permits, again, it's administrative. It would come through the planning department, and they would have, we would just have to come up with the application forms and all that, and they would be processed through the planning department, and then, of course, pay it to clerk's office. I will touch on food truck rallies. A food truck rally is if they want to have more than two. It's only allowed in the C2 or C3 district. It's a separate permit, but now all the people there would have to be, have their local permits in addition to the food truck rally permit. And then, the other part I want to touch on is, we do have the same provisions we already have regarding if you are operating, you know, you only operate in Smyrna at town events or things like that. We don't require this for town events, as you sign up as a vendor through the parks department or with Sima, Fifth Depot Days, or whatever. And then also, if it's a private event, like, you know, we have certain industries have food trucks come onto their site sometimes for, for their employees or things like that, that that's not, you would not have to have a permit to operate there. If you want to operate outside of those parameters, you would have to have a permit that would come through, through the planning department. I think I hit the highlights, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think you hit a lot more than the highlights right there.
I want to make sure we covered everything.
Yeah, but that's a lot to dive into, I know. It's something I know that council's worked on with Brian, and trying to be user-friendly to our food truck services and make the process a little less incumbent on BZA meetings and things of that nature, so.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So, what you were saying at the end about those were the only conditions that you could have a food truck. There's a section in here that says that they don't actually have to have a contractual arrangement if they come into a subdivision for a limited amount of time, four hours?
No, that's still a private event.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, see, if you had a private event, someone had a private event at their home, this is for a party, just for their family or whatever, I guess that would work. But if they're going to be set up, like, an HOA has them come in and it's open to everybody, they would have to have the permit.
They would, okay.
Can they go into a private, say, like a private party and actually sell out of the truck, or does it?
I mean, if you, yeah, they can, I guess, but it wouldn't be, if it's a private event, I'm sure it's going to be, for the most part, especially in a residential area, it's going to be something that whoever they're, they're, they're have a catering situation, that someone has paid them to cater an event or something like that, that they may serve out of the truck. I doubt that would be, I mean, you wouldn't be paying for it yourself at that point. It would be whoever's hosting the party is paid for the catering.
Mobile food service vehicles must be licensed and equipped in accordance with the rules and regulations of all local, state, and federal agencies having jurisdiction over such vehicles. Are there any county regulations? And I know they're, they're obviously state, and I just wondered exactly what those state regulations are.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly myself. That was something that did come from Brentwood's ordinance, so I would assume it has to be, if you're going to operate on a public street, they have to have the, whatever license plate, you know, the plates and all that.
Well, I understand.
I think they follow them to the health.
The health department, certainly.
Which is part of the.
Well, if you remember, I asked, I asked about business licenses such as that, and y'all had told me that the state regulated that, so I was just kind of wondering, what else do they require as far as that goes?
They have a state license, and then they also have the health, you know, they have to pass health codes, just like any other restaurant.
Are they inspected by the same?
I don't know what the process is. We can find out.
I'd like to know. I mean, you know, I still have some real concerns about this simply because of the, the brick-and-mortar stores, which we do have in our community that are sometimes trying to scratch out a living. And, well, you know, I think we've got a couple of new, for instance, hot chicken places in town, and then we also have hot chicken trucks that come in regular, and if I get my hot chicken fix out of one of the trucks, I don't need to go get one from the brick-and-mortar people. And, you know, to me, that's, you know, a bit of a disservice to our community, and then there's no taxes which we also are reaping off of it. That's my small business opinion.
Please understand that we tackled this from a request from the council to bring forward some recommendations. If we were going to operate food trucks, what would be the best way to do that based on the citizens asking, you know, we had several citizens' comments and calls.
Believe me, I heard the public outcry myself.
But understand, we're not, we're not formulating an opinion on this should happen or not happen. That will be the responsibility of the council, whether we put this in place or not. And I'm not trying to pass the buck. We were challenged with bringing you recommendations if we allow food trucks, especially on the residential side.
Yeah.
And here's what we're saying, if that was the pleasure of the council, this is what we would see as the way that we would operate them.
Of course, we have local food trucks too, which, you know, that operate out of some of our brick-and-mortar.
Absolutely.
You know, there's, we've got to find a way to be fair to them also. I'd just like to read the state regulations if.
We will get that information and get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, how are, how are the food trucks going to know that they now need to get a permit? How are you going to put that notice out there?
Yeah, we'll have to do some, obviously, have to do some PR on it.
And there, there is a food truck organization that actually, our friends at Cousins Maine Lobster, Win Betts, he's actually president of this year, and he's been very good to work with through this COVID and what we, you know, how we relaxed the rules during the COVID time as far as going into the neighborhoods, getting that information out. So, we'll use avenues like that as well. There are some associations that we can get the information to.
And how are you going to know if someone has their permit? Like, if they're in a neighborhood and they don't have a permit, is somebody going out to check, or how are we addressing that?
You know, hopefully, we will get some calls and those kind of, I mean, we'll do the best we can, but a lot of these trucks are going to be after hours. It's, it's going to be up to the community to, to help us, you know, know, and then at that time, what we do have the ability to do is send an officer out and check. I'll be honest with you, Saturday I was out, I saw two trucks in neighborhoods and one in a commercial location that I know they don't have permits, but we've relaxed that right now. So, it's, it's going to take the community understanding how this works and that there's a value to somebody doing business in our community having a permit, because those are dollars that are being rendered back to the town. Some of that in lieu of some of the tax loss that we'll have. So, it's, it's, I mean, it's not a perfect world. There's not a solution to that. It's going, some, some's going to be just keeping up with it.
You know, you possibly could even come up with a sticker to put on a window or some kind of decal, whatever, that would allow us to know that this one, when you receive your permit, you receive this thing that you can put on the side of your vehicle or something.
It's been my observation, for the most part, these trucks have been invited to different neighborhoods by the people in the.
Typically, that is true.
So, it's not something that's just totally unwanted?
No, and I'm not saying it's not unwanted. I'm just saying with the permit, would now we're trying to say that they need to get a permit, and then some of them may not know that they need a permit, but how are they going to know? So, that's why I'm asking these questions.
That's the, that's, to me, that kind of goes back to when we start looking at codes. How do you know something's a violation? I mean, I don't think you can ever have enough force in any one area to, to have someone just to continuously show up or whatnot, and usually, we find out there's an issue when there is a complaint from a citizen. And I think maybe the solution is working with the association. I think that's a great source to get it out, because I think we'll find many of those vendors are there.
Well, and you'll be surprised, the vendors that are doing it right, they know the vendors that are not, and sometimes they're a real good source of knowing who's, who's not abiding by the law, so.
That's good. I'm just, we're putting into some practice, a new, we're implementing a new plan.
Possibly.
So, I'm asking the questions to try to make sure this plan is going to go forward in a positive way.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Kevin, you were talking, H.G., a minute ago, and you were mentioning about, like, if they were catering, they would pull in the driveway and, but what I've seen, I think, in some places, maybe even in Murfreesboro, where these class reunions are having them at these event centers, and then the trucks are going there, and then people that are in the reunion just go out and get their food off the truck. Would they have to have a permit for something like that?
Yeah, if it's a private event at an event center, they wouldn't.
They would not?
They would not, if it's a private event, yeah. They would be limited to the four hours and, but no, they wouldn't have to have one. Now.
But we do have rallies.
Yeah.
Truck rallies that would have to have a permit.
Right, yeah.
With a completely separate permit, though.
Yeah, and those are only allowed in the commercial zone, because those wouldn't be in residential. Having more than two trucks in a residential area is probably not, we don't think would.
But a lot of these trucks that are going and providing at these private, like a reunion, they're not living off of just serving that one-time reunion or twice-a-year reunion. They're going to have their permit, because they're going to want to go into the neighborhoods, and they're going to want to do other things. They're going to want to make that truck as profitable as possible. So, I'm not as concerned about that. I think we're going to find, most of those people are already going to have a permit.
If somebody's doing a private event, let's say in their neighborhood, and the truck's parked out front, what keeps the neighborhood from approaching the truck to?
Number one, the truck can't be parked on the street.
Well.
It'll have to be parked in the driveway or in a private.
But what would stop people from thinking that's a public neighborhood food truck? I don't know, you know?
Depends on how well you know your neighbor. If he's going to let you come over and crash his party.
A lot of good questions, though.
Yeah, it is, and there's a lot of things that we're just going to have to work through, so.
And we know you all discussed this this week, and there's two members out here, and there may be other questions, and I don't think we're in any kind of hurry that if you're not ready to move forward, we can leave them or whatever, so I'm just doing.
It's not critical, but we, we are trying to help everybody in this situation, I think, especially the food service trucks that also want to make a living. And to H.G.'s point, I get it. It's, we do have brick-and-mortar businesses. It's been true to us for a long time, and we don't want to hurt their business either, but, you know, he used the example of, if you want to get your hot chicken fix, you might just go to the truck instead of the brick-and-mortar. And I think most people use the same theory. If, if that's their favorite hot chicken, they're going to go get it no matter where it is. So, it's, it's good competitive, retail competitiveness, I mean.
Well, we, we had a, on social media this weekend, a Nashville hot chicken truck was in our community in a subdivision, and one of the neighbors blasted out, hey, this certain named restaurant is in this community, and I was watching it on social media, and there was probably 25, hey, great, thanks for the information, we're headed that way. I mean, so, you know, those kind of things. I have to give credit to Chief Bill. He sat here, and he just sent me a text message, said, well, we've had food trucks downtown for some of our events, the state health department sends inspectors out. So, I'm sure that that's part of the processes. All these trucks are going through state health department inspection before they're allowed to go out on the street, and when they show up for some of the bigger events, they're, they're showing up to double-check them.
Well, like I say, we do have time, but thank you all for diving into this, bringing us some comparisons.
Well, and what I would ask you to do is you read through this. If you have questions, if you would send them to me or to Kevin, and we'll continue to work on this. But I, again, reiterate that it's, at some point, it's up to the council's pleasure if this is something you want to, you know, put into place.
Sure.
We're, we're open to whichever way you guys decide to go on this. We just want to give you as much information. We'll do as much research, and then if there's tweaks that need to be made, we'll work those into the, to the, we'll work with Jeff and make sure that they're in the ordinance correctly, and we're covering all the bases.
Well, we appreciate your time on it so far. Any other questions?
I did.
Okay.
I actually have read through this already, so I had written out my questions. Can you explain about serving alcoholic beverages? Because I think we kind of relaxed that as well, but.
Well, the state relaxed that, and the state has control over that. Once Governor Lee has left that relaxation on that right now, based on the Uber deliveries and customer pickups, once he pulls that in his, his executive order, that no longer could happen. We do not have the authority to allow alcohol sales through the food trucks. That, that will stop.
It just mentioned it in here and said, food trucks may not sell alcoholic beverages except as may be specifically allowed by applicable state law. So, I wanted to know.
And it's, right now, it's covered under that executive order. Once that order is retracted, then that will stop. That will cease.
That, that order also included alcohol takeout from restaurants as well.
It did. That's what I said, through Uber-type deliveries, through the brick-and-mortars.
Or just showing up.
Just, yeah, and we had some of the food trucks that were just showing up, just selling alcohol, and that was approved by the governor's office, and we, we don't have a choice but to allow that. So, but, you know, casual. a choice but to allow that. So, but, you know, casual pint and margarita house and some of those trucks that are going through the neighborhood like, uh, ice cream trucks selling alcohol, those would have to stop once the order's taken out of place.
Okay.
Other questions?
Any more? All right. Good questions. Thank you all. Moving on to item number six, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a development agreement with Blakeney Partners GP relative to road impact fee offsets. Cap?
Yeah, this is an impact fee offset agreement, uh, with the developers of the Blakeney development on Rocky IV County Road. Uh, this is similar to what we did, uh, a few months ago with the Wind Farms Development Group. Um, they are required to make some improvements to the intersection of Rocky IV County Road and Morton Lane. They're actually already working on that. Uh, that's an offsite improvement they are required to make as a part of Phase One of the development. Uh, again, they will not be building any houses in this development. They are only gonna sell lots since they have requested that they be able to recoup some of their, uh, costs with their offsite improvement through an impact fee offset agreement. Uh, this can be done at 70% of the cost. Um, the costs that they have submitted, and we have reviewed this, uh, their, their costs are, uh, 345, uh, 561, and 92 cents. So 70% of that is 241,893.34. So that's what they, that is the maximum amount that could be offset, uh, through this. And so, uh, again, we did review this and, and, uh, it's, is in order. We'd recommend it to you.
Questions for Kevin? All right, move on to item seven. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number one with Judy Construction Company relative to wastewater treatment plant expansion project. Hi, Mike.
How are you?
Good.
Uh, so after we hired Judy to do the construction at the wastewater plant, we had them do some value engineering. Uh, six out of the seven items, there were deductions. We did have an addition to add some cleaning systems to clarifiers, but the net was a reduction in cost of 643,316 dollars.
We like reductions.
Yes, we do.
Any questions for Mike on this? Number eight, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Iltron relative to AMI system implementation.
Uh, yes, sir. This is, this is basically Phase Two of the AMI project. Phase One, we did the gas project this fiscal year, built the network through the gas thing that is set up for water. Uh, this is a project that is approved in the capital budget and, um, speaking with Brian, he is allowing us to move forward with this project. Uh, what this entails, we'll retrofit all the water meters with basically digital heads, uh, put the Itron sensors in there with them, and also we'll have leak sensors throughout the system to hopefully be able to reduce some leakage.
Good idea. Questions for Mike on this one? Item nine, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Rollins Excavating Company LLC relative to stormwater, general construction, and concrete work. Tom?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, we went out to bid for our annual contract for stormwater. We had four responsive bidders, SBW Constructors, Scott and Ritter, Inc., Rollins Excavation, and Walt Walker Building Group. Uh, Rollins Excavation came in as the lowest responsible responsive bidder at 786,340 dollars as the base bid, and we're recommending them, uh, for a contract to.
Questions for Tom, anybody? Thank you, sir. Number 10, approval of and authorization for the mayor to execute the 2019 to 2020 annual report relative to NPDES Phase Two MS4 program.
Thank you. Uh, the town of Smyrna operates under an MS4 permit, which is a municipal separate storm sewer system permit with TDEC. And every year, we're required to put together a report indicating some of the milestones we've achieved during the 1819 year and submit that to TDEC. We got that approved through Stormwater Advisory Committee and are asking for council approval on that as well.
Any questions for Tom? Number 11, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract addendum with Jones Brothers, Inc., relative to providing topsoil hauled, placed, and compacted for the firing range.
Uh, thank you. This is the final, this was the final, um, part of the project to complete the, uh, firing range. Uh, it has been completed. This was to get a sifter on-site to separate out any rock from the soil, so we can use that on the backstop area, put about two, two feet thickness of a clean fill material on the back, so we don't have any ricochet issues.
That's a smart idea. Any count, any questions for Tom on this? Item 12, the approval of terms, I'm sorry, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance license agreement with Global Music Rights relative to music at town events. Hi, Mike.
Vice Mayor, how are you doing, council? Um, we got a call, uh, about a month ago from, uh, a representative from, uh, Global Music Rights in, um, regards to licensing. And we've got three or four that we already pay for music in the town, such as the pool and events and programs and things like that. So we sent that over to Jeff, and we got the agreement, uh, for his approval, and he did look at it and approve it, uh, to be paid on an annual, um, cost of 850 dollars based on the population of the town.
Any questions for Mike on this? Item 13, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Cummins, Inc., relative to fire department generator maintenance. Chief?
Mayor, council, this is a maintenance agreement for all our emergency backup generators at the fire stations and also at, uh, Moore's Hill, where our radio equipment is. And we would ask y'all's permission to, uh, sign the contract.
Put that down. Any questions for Chief Bill? I think he's trying to get your picture, I think, chief, but.
I noticed that, sir.
He's setting you up, so. All right, item number 14, approval of the terms of the authorization for the mayor to execute a memo of understanding with Motlow State Community College relative to emergency medical responder refresher training for the fire department.
Yes, sir. Again, this is a, uh, agreement. This will allow Motlow to come to our training room and hold this class instead at the academy. And again, we ask y'all's permission to sign.
All right. Questions for Chief on this one? Item number 15, the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Boozer and Associates relative to appraisals, review service for the Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane Waterline Project.
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council. Uh, as you know, we've, we've, we've brought you, uh, previous meeting for the appraisals. Well, under the Uniform Act, there also has to be, uh, a second step of review, review the appraisal by another firm. Uh, and we're asking, uh, to enter into an agreement with Boozer Associates to be that reviewing party for that.
Any questions for Jeff on this? Move to item 16. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Regional Transportation Authority, RTA, for 2020 to 2021. You got that one?
I can take that one as well. This is our, uh, annual contract that we have with, uh, the Regional Transportation Authority. Uh, as you can see, there is well attached is the, the route that the, uh, bus takes as well. Uh, but this is, uh, will get us through, uh, till next July.
And questions for Jeff on this one? None? Item number 17, the approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Flock Safety relative to license plate recognition cameras for the police department. Hi, Chief.
Sir, good, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, very quickly, just so you are aware, this is a sole-source bid. Uh, Flock is a company that a lot of police departments in this state are currently using as a license plate reader. This is a public safety issue. I know that after speaking with the chief in Maryville, they were actually able to have a case where a carjacking in Johnson City with a child inside, and those people drove into the Maryville city limits, and they were able to make that traffic stop and rescue that child. I know I spoke with the chief in Germantown, which is also using the same company. They've had numerous successes with stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, et cetera. And it's also being used in Franklin's, being used in Gatlinburg. It's being used in a lot of cities. And again, we are just asking that, uh, y'all approve the contract. Another thing that is a good thing about this company is that contract is year-to-year. So if we decide after one year we don't like it for whatever reason, we can go to another company or we can do something else.
Chief, how does that system operate? How, is it set stationary?
It basically, it, it records down the license plates that come in.
From a stationary position or?
Yes, from a stationary position. Or the ones that we're looking at will be stationary. You can buy mobile. Uh, but these will actually record the license plates as they enter our city, and in turn, if those license plate are entered in NCIC or, uh, those type of situations, then it will flag, and it will alert our officers that this vehicle has entered our city, and, uh, they are either wanted for whatever crime, or the, the vehicle is stolen, or the license plate stolen.
Chief, I know you and I talked some about this.
Yes.
And, um, I, um, had actually talked to some people over in Mount Juliet who'd had some, uh, some success with it. Are you at liberty to talk about the 10 places you're planning on putting these at right now?
We're gonna be putting them at 10 major inter, inter, entryways into the community. I don't know that we wanna give exact locations.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, you can count it'll be the major arteries coming into the community. It'll be covering all.
Incoming, not anything basically outgoing, right?
Right. At this point, if it's going out of the community, we, we don't have the, the authority to, to chase that. Uh, so basically what happens is they come into the community, it would record that vehicle. It'll give us a picture, so we'll know what the vehicle looks like. It'll give us a license plate number. So it won't track the vehicle and tell us it's over on Chestnut Street.
Right.
But it'll tell us when it went through a certain point, and it's like a 15-second lag from the time it hits till we get an alert, and it'll alert through the system onto the computers in the police cars. So they'll know at that point, that picture pops up. So if it's a white Chevy Nova that came through on, uh, I-24 at Sam Ridley Parkway, 15 seconds ago, it was in that area. So we'll know to look for it in that area.
Yeah. I, I know when I was talking to the people over in Mount Juliet, they were, they had actually put a few inside the city, so that way if it hit, let's say it hit coming in, then it hit another mile down, then they could tell.
We will have, we will have great coverage, trust me.
It's gonna be one on your street, Jerry.
Good. I like coming in speed bumps, too.
All right. Any other questions for Chief on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 18, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Barge Design Solutions relative to professional services for the Lee Victory Recreational Park Entrance Road. Charles?
Vice Mayor and Council, uh, this project will be from the current termination point at the Nolan Drive roundabout and extend into the park and give a back exit out of the park that will give you access to the signals at Lowry Street and at Sam Ridley. And we'd just like to use Barge Design, who did the Phase One design in CEI.
Any questions on this for Charles?
How far will this go into the park?
It'll be right between the two parking lots. You can see that there's already an, uh, area there between those two parking lots on the backside where the football field is. It'll go up between those.
Does it make a circular route?
It'll circle around into it. Uh, we haven't got the exact layout to it yet. We have a conceptual plan that Barge Wagner did years ago, but we'll follow up on that. But it's just to come in and just, it'd just be the road only that we're gonna connect into at this time.
You imagine that this is in the same vicinity of where the, the, uh, all-inclusive playground will be built, and there's another, uh, actually another, uh, parking lot that's part of the playground area that, but like you said, you'll, you'll see it connect that road between those two back parking lots right now.
Rockell, do you have a question?
You somewhat answered it. I was asking if there was a design that they had in mind already, and you said there's a conceptual plan.
They have a conceptual plan, but it will just come off from the roundabout, circle in, and then like I said, connect back into the, between the two parking lots there. I think, uh, Mike with Parks, they have a conceptual plan of the development around that, and then like you said, the new rotary, uh, playground that'll go in to serve them, so.
Okay. So when you said Mike has a plan, but Barge has a conceptual plan, is it something that's gonna be merged together, or we're looking at one or the other?
Well, this is just for the roadway at this time. That will follow later with their whole overall, but it will work in with that overall conceptual plan of what they're planning on the other amenities. But this would just be the road project to make that connection.
Okay.
It was a part of our Parks Master Plan years ago. I mean, this, this is not, we had another entrance planned, but we didn't necessarily have a roundabout, and so it was kind of modified when we, you know, went to the, to the, to the roundabout plan. But then there's also, there's, there's quite a bit of property still left over there, which, um, is addressed in the Parks Master Plan.
Okay.
Good comments. Any other questions? All right, move to number 19. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Reagan Smith and Associates, Inc., relative to design and CEI services for the Lowry Street Phase Two project. Charles, you get that one too, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, the evaluation committee had the recommendation of the top three farms, and we, uh, chose to recommend Reagan Smith for this. They did the overall conceptual plan, plus they did the Phase One design, and they'll be doing the CEI work on the Phase One project. So we'd like to retain them for the Phase Two.
All right. Questions for Charles? Item 20 then. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a CEI supplement with Neil Schaefer relative to Enin Springs West Extension Project.
The original CEI service agreement was based on a completion date of December 15th of 2019. This supplement with Neil Schaefer and their subconsultants for materials testing and the final survey work, uh, is what we're looking for on that, since we did have utilities and weather delays on the project.
It's been a little bit of a process over there, hasn't it?
Yes, and there, uh, Neil Schaefer's been very well working with us on that, and they've done a great job with the contractor, uh, on the project.
All right. Questions for Charles on this one? Item 21, appointment of one member to the Sister City Committee to fill unexpired term ending 2022. Does Jeff have that one, or?
Well, I know that, um, we had a resignation from the Sister City Committee, and we've had one application, it, to my knowledge so far. There's two?
Two in our pack.
Okay, there's two in the pack. I haven't seen the other one. So, uh, there are two, uh, that we can, uh, discuss, I guess, this evening. Is that, or do we?
You don't have to discuss them this evening. They're just, you're just putting on the agenda for.
For the agenda.
Any discussion we need to have?
Unless anybody wants to talk about it. So we'll bring it up at the council meeting for a vote.
All right. Okay, the last is on other. So do we have any other, other?
I do have one item under other, uh, that the mayor reminded, uh, uh, on our Planning Commission, we did have a resignation from Ed Davenport, uh, and the mayor has appointed, uh, Tim Slate to take that place. So that, uh, will be effective at the next Planning Commission meeting. Tim Slate will be joining, uh, in the mayor's, uh, appointment to that, that committee.
Speaking of Ed, I spoke with him this week and thanked him for all the years he's, uh, given his time to our Planning Commission body for a lot of years. He's brought a lot of wisdom to that body and a lot of guidance. So, uh, appreciate his time with the town and that he gave us. He, he's, uh, voluntarily stepping away and gonna enjoy a little more time on his own. So we wish Ed all the best, and we look forward to working with Tim Slate, so. All right.
Well, there'll be a, you guys vote on a chairman, a new chairman, or does the vice chairman just step in, or how's that?
I think we'll have to vote on new officers for that board.
Yes, the next meeting.
Yeah. Any others?
Did you and Kevin come to the resignation?
If none, we'll start, uh, with our director reports. Uh, and I don't know who wants to go first. We'll just let you come and go as you wish. Looks like he beat you up, chief.
Good.
Rex?
Got to be quick on your feet. Vice Mayor and Council, uh, June local sales tax, we received 1,208,953 dollars. And that gives us a year-to-date surplus of 243,978 dollars. The June state shared tax, we received 518,069 dollars. That gives us a year-to-date surplus of 56,296 dollars. Uh, just go ahead and do my report. Uh, tomorrow we'll be closing accounts payable portion of the books. Uh, that'll allow us to start in on, uh, making our year-end adjusting journal entries. Our auditors will be here Monday to help us along with the field work.
I bet you can't wait.
That's, I'm excited.
I knew you were. I could tell. I knew you were, I could tell. Any questions for Rex?
Yeah, I've got one.
You knew that was coming.
I did. I tried to get away.
When you saw these numbers, Rex, did you, did you do a dance because they weren't as bad as what you expected them to be?
They were a lot better than what I expected them to be. Um, we've uh, and they're trending upward. Uh, Brian and I have been, we've talked about it on a couple of different occasions and we're optimistic, uh, but we, we've kinda like another month or, another month or two to go by to make sure we're, we're really on track. But the numbers are good, they're, they're trending positively.
We know that there was a lot of pent-up purchasing that probably took place in the last month or two as well. So uh, HG, you're good to point it out that we didn't suffer like we might, like we could have.
Absolutely.
Like we could have through the COVID, uh, sales tax revenue looks pretty, pretty good considering.
I saw something from the Finance Officers Association that 60% of the municipalities in the, in the nation had to make some pretty drastic uh, cuts.
We're fortunate.
We're, we're fortunate, we're blessed.
Yep. It's been interesting to track some of the sales volumes of what's, what's selling. You know, we went through March where everybody was hoarding groceries and toilet paper and some of those things. And right now, there's been several articles I've read, uh, that's come across on the, on the news about, you know, outdoor equipment, uh, kayaks, canoes, boats, uh, bicycles, swimming pools. Uh, I mean, right now, I think Leisure Lifestyles is saying that if you buy a pool from them and you want them to install it, it's January or February before they can get to it. Uh, it's just been a real interesting trek to watch the buying patterns and what people are doing. But you know, you talked about pent up. I think people are tired of being pent up in the house and now it's, everything is outside. Uh, you know, we're seeing large activities in the parks, uh, from the standpoint, just people getting out walking and uh, you know, getting some exercise and stuff. So it's been an interesting um, cycle of, of business. Uh, but fortunately for us, they're out there spending money, so.
Yeah, it's been a crazy time for sure, but we've all learned a little bit more by it, I think.
Yep.
Made us all a little bit wiser hopefully, so. Thank you, Rex. Who's next, Chief Bill?
You gotta get his picture. I'm in LA. I'm from the [inaudible].
... this, uh, this afternoon with FEMA, we're still trying to keep up with uh, any and all money that we spend toward the, uh, medical emergency that we're under. And uh, hopefully we'll be able to receive some of our funding back when there is a date set for closing. There is not one as of this afternoon. Another thing, we're still trying to get estimates for repairs to our bumper that had the incident on Innen Springs Road. And we, I spoke to a Marion today and we're hoping in August, the new bumper will arrive. But uh, waiting on it.
Well, and again, thank you and your department for the work they did through the pandemic, making sure masks were distributed.
I appreciate everybody's help.
Well, all, everybody. And so from, from our town manager down to every director, everybody was involved. All of our employees are involved. Uh, you guys were on site back in the parking lot handing out masks, quite a bit, uh, driven by and seen that. So just to everybody in the room and everybody part of it, I know Brian, gosh, bless your heart, we, his phone rang silly during the, and probably still does to some degree, but just uh, handling questions on COVID, right? Day to day.
It's a new world.
It is a moving target too, so.
Yep.
Appreciate all you guys for doing all that hard work. Uh, Mike?
I'll step up. Um, so last week, we had our annual T-Puck inspection for natural gas, uh, clean bill of health, no violations, no after-action items due this year. So what that means is next year, unless we make some additions to the operations and maintenance or emergency response plan, cuts about three hours out of the time of them going through it. They won't review it again because we, we did well this year. So uh, that's a great thing. Uh, the risk and resiliency assessment, we are having weekly meetings with Thomas and Hutton slash Dempsey-Dilling. Uh, that's going well, putting the plan together. It does have to be certified by the EPA by December 31st of this year.
Bill, any questions for Mike? Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, the planning commission's agenda is very long next week, so we'll have a lot going on there. There's several items that will be coming to the council. And the only other thing I just want to highlight is, is we are still, even through COVID, trying to conduct a census. And uh, our numbers are ticking up a little bit as far as percentage of people that are responding, but we're still, over 30% of the folks that have not responded in the town. So just want to encourage everybody to respond to your, to your census. It's easy to do online and that helps us uh, with our revenues, so. That's all I got.
Any questions for Kevin? Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, Tom?
I just want to mention, uh, late summer, early fall, we're gonna be doing some building and resurfacing on some various roads in the Smyrna area. We're gonna be working on Rock Springs Road between uh, I-24 and uh, Montgomery Way. Also some roads in the Clarkson Square subdivision just north of there, Cedar Grove, um, also some, uh, some of the roads between Hazelwood, Old Nashville Highway and Todd Lane, as well as a couple of roads in the downtown area. Uh, as far as drainage goes, we're working on, still working on the project on McLaren Road, Lost, uh, Lake Farm subdivision and hopefully get that wrapped up here in the next month, two months. I got it.
Thank you, any questions for Tom? We uh, prior to our meeting this evening, we had a road update. We do this occasionally and uh, many of you were in the room with us. And so uh, Tom pointed out a lot of subdivisions that are in need of road repair. Uh, it sounds like there are a lot of them in the next cou- couple of years probably that are gonna see some resurfacing and work. So if you live in a neighborhood right now that you feel like your roads are old and tore up, chances are pretty good they're on the list. They've been out checking those out and uh, finding out which ones need it as a priority, which ones don't. If you have a road issue in your neighborhood, I think just call in and, and if you have a big pothole or something like that, they're, they're real good about getting out and fixing that stuff, so. Appreciate it, Tom. Charles, you were in the meeting, you got some things you want to add?
I just want to bring you up to date on two of our construction projects that are currently going on out at the Innen Springs Extension. Today, they made a traffic change now that Rocky Fork will tee into the new Innen Springs Road. So I just want the traveling public to be aware of that. And we are running traffic on either side of the raised median. Uh, they still haven't paved the shoulder section, so there is a little lip there. So just ask the traveling public to that area to please observe the speed limits there and drive with caution. Um, like I said, hopefully the asphalt with, with the weather now, we kinda got a couple of rain days coming up, but uh, that will continue on. And that on the Sam Ridley widening, just appreciates the public's patience as that project goes on. Just drive with care, there's a lot going on on both sides with utilities and stormwater. And if the public sees something out there that they see as a problem, I've got several calls, which is a great heads up for me to go out and check and get with the inspection and contractor on any issues that come up. So if anything comes up, just please call me at 615-267-5007.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of work going on out there and of course, I, my, my place of business, where I practice my business, is right there on Sam Ridley Parkway. So it's a, it's a little bit of a hectic travel through there right now with all the concrete barriers and the orange barrels and things going on. But I can assure you, when it's done, it'll be a lot nicer, it'll be worth it. Um, for the public's knowledge, they may not realize, but all the cross-sections that are not signaled are removed. So those places where the police cars had to come visit quite a bit because people crossing from one side of the parkway over to the other or crossing into the middle to get into a lane without a signal, that, that will no longer be. It'll be a lot safer as well, so. I'm excited about getting that project done, it's been a long time coming. Um, who have we not heard from, Steve?
Uh, just a brief report, uh, it's a, it's kind of the businesses, same, same as usual, we're, we're very busy, issuing a lot of permits, doing a lot of inspections. And I will report, I, I looked and uh, in June, we had 90 new families move to Smyrna. Uh, and that's just single-family homes. So that's uh, that doesn't include apartments, uh, so, but those, those 90 homes that were completed in June.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work and it's a lot of, it's a lot of new, uh, new citizens.
Yep, it is. Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Hal, you want to come up?
Yes, sir, good evening. As Brian was mentioning about outdoor sports and activities, golf has become the perfect outdoor social distancing recreation. Since we opened up June 1st, we have been very, very, very busy. Things not quite back to normal, some of the things that we were able to have, last year, we had five corporate leagues. Uh, two of them, because it happened so late, they weren't ever to get, able to get their structure together. But we did, we do have Nissan, Ideal Tron and Ingram that, that are playing their corporate leagues this year. Uh, the governor released for sports for the high school golf teams and they have specific protocol. Actually, I've been quite impressed with the way they're doing it, they're taking temperature checks, filling out a piece of paper each time on each high school golfer out in the parking lot and then maintaining social distancing. But we got Smyrna High and Stewart Creek High School that actually started practicing two weeks ago and they start their matches next week. Um, the, the, uh, two associations, the senior association started uh, a month late and they normally do about six weeks than they normally do. They have about 50 that play every Tuesday. And then the ladies association started that same week, so both associations are running. For August, uh, on August 15th, we have Tennessee PGA Junior Tour that's coming out. These are the kids that are 12 years old and under and they're playing 18 holes on the executive course on a Saturday for a big statewide tournament. Uh, we have a, a traveling seniors group that comes to our course three or four times a year called Big Daddy's Bunch, but there's about 60 or 70 of them that are playing on the 26th. And then United Way Outing, uh, Jeff probably touched base on, that we have on the 28th.
Thanks, Hal.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So Steve mentioned, uh, our office is much the same kind of business as usual, but as Hal alluded to, we are uh, doing our golf scramble, our charity golf scramble, which will benefit United Way. Uh, we normally do that in May and we've got that rescheduled for the end of August, August 28th. Love to have you guys put another team in. Uh, interesting enough, we were worried, the committee was worried that with the pandemic that we'd have a hard time getting sponsors for the event and maybe not do as well as we did last year. Uh, but as of today, we're right on track with what we did last year. So we're looking at making about somewhere between 40 and $45,000 for our local community. So we're pretty excited about that, so.
When you asked us if we could put a team in, I think we probably will, but can you define team? Because uh-
Hey, four people running around and-
That's all you need, right? Just warm bodies.
That's right.
Okay, well, we can probably pull that together, so. Maybe even get two teams, who knows? Be great.
It's always a lot of fun.
Yes, it is, yes. Good for, for a good cause.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody have missed, Mike?
Just got a couple of things I'll go over, just a couple of projects. Zalma Park, we're kind of wrapping up down there. Uh, we have had a little bit of a hard time getting some materials and steel and that type of thing, so it's been delayed. Uh, and it seems to rain about every day down there, so that's, hadn't been good either. But uh, the contractors done a great job, they kept the place clean, it's, it's looking real nice. I know they poured the plaza yesterday at Washington and Lowry, um, and it, it's gonna look good. They still got some pressure washing to do because it was stamped colored concrete, so some work to do there. Uh, also, we'll be starting over at the, the soccer park on the restroom building at the annex uh, soon. So you'll see building grounds and Parks and Rec working together to, to get that going. And uh, Brian is exactly right on the outdoor recreation. We've seen some numbers pick up in some of our offerings with kayak floats and that type of thing and the programs that the SOAC staff are putting on. Uh, we've seen in July, the numbers were much higher than were in June, so uh, people are really itching to get out. Uh, we have been fortunate to be able to have some tournaments uh, at the New Park and some other places. We've, we've modified our plans, we only allow two fields per complex, so basically every other field in the complex. Uh, but it has helped, uh, get some revenue for the town, uh, and the department, but also allowing people to get outside and play some ball, which is good. Um, and I do want to commend our athletics department, they're working on our leagues, uh, to come up with plans for modified operations for the fall leagues. Obviously, we've been following the, the governor's pledge on that, but uh, they've worked hard to try to keep it going, so I appreciate that.
It's a lot of hot work these days, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You know, Mike, uh, Hal mentioned the, the high school golf teams, are the tennis teams playing? Don't they use our courts?
They, they haven't started yet. And usually they're in the spring, some of them are in the spring, uh, they'll have some tryouts up there. But um, you know, we, that was part of the non-contact if they decided to do it. So they may have some tryouts while I was out last week. I know they've been fairly busy up there.
Sure. Any questions for Mike, about anything, parks related? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, is there anybody I missed? Todd, do you have anything at all? Uh, anybody wants, any, Chief Arnold? Okay. And Kathy, did you have anything? You were hidden and I couldn't see, so. All right. Ms. Diane, what have you got for us this evening?
Well, people are still opening businesses.
Good.
We've had 46 new ones this month and I can relate to the swimming pools because Steve issued the permits and we collected all the money. And every, every household in Smyrna put in pools this summer.
I gotta find somebody's got one. I'll figure that out later. Anything else, Diane?
No.
Thank you. Brian, what have you got for us this evening?
Uh, just a couple of things, real quick. Uh, the last uh, council meeting, I mentioned that Laura Lowe's father was not doing well down at the courts and unfortunately, he has passed away. So uh, extend condolences to the family and I know they would uh, love to hear from you or, or know that your prayers are, are with them, so. Uh, the other thing, I just, real quick, um, in the lobby, starting tomorrow, uh, we'll have a uh, box or a crate out here marked, uh, the masks that came from the state, uh, that we gave in the parking lot. Uh, we've got our hands on a few more boxes of those and we'll have those available for anybody that wants to stop by and pick up free masks. Uh, they can come into the lobby and pick those up until, until we run out. Uh, we've got about, I think, what, five boxes? So we've got, you know, a pretty decent supply, so they're available here at Town Hall if you want to come by and pick one up.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That was short and sweet tonight. Short and sweet. Okay. Counselor, what do you got for us this evening?
Uh, appreciate Chief and Todd and Eric Kennedy have been working really hard on updating the SOPs. We'll be bringing those to you, uh, for the police department, uh, next month. And also, uh, to K. Charles, the Barry Brady Act, uh, which, for firemen dealing with certain types of cancers, uh, we're gonna be bringing that to you as well, so. But I thank them for working on that. And I would just give uh, uh, thoughts and prayers to uh, Herman Kane family and John Lewis family for, uh, I know that most people know who those folks are, but uh, just thinking about their families is what they're going through right now.
Thank you. Rockell, what have you got for us this evening?
Okay, um, first, I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the roads and the courts update, um, today. Thank you for all your hard work and for getting us up to speed on all the things that are going on with our courts and with our road system. Um, next, I'd like to also, uh, thank Ed Davenport. I did see him this week and, and personally thanked him for his service, uh, with the planning commission. Um, and also like to welcome Tim Slate aboard, uh, to this commi- to the planning commission. Um, Jerry, you, uh, you said, uh, some words of comfort in your prayer about the Clark family, so I'd also like to extend my condolences to the Clark family and also to Laura Lowe's family, uh, condolences, um, to her as well. And then there were a couple of ribbon cuttings this week and I, I thought about that and, and what you were saying, Rex, about, uh, our tax dollars, our sales tax being up. and what you were saying, Rex, about our tax dollars, our sales tax being up. And I just, we are really a blessed community right now, you know, to have businesses that are opening. Ms. Diane, forty-six business license, that, that's, that's amazing. And it's a blessing that we live in a community that's still continuing to prosper during this time. So I, I'm excited for those new businesses that open. And I also wanted to mention another business that's been here for a long time, the M&amp;E Donut Palace. That was, there was a news story about them. And I bring them up because I just, I'm so thankful to the citizens of Smyrna who come out and support our businesses. Because after that news story about them, for the next couple of days, there were lines out their door of people coming to support them. And I went on Saturday trying to, to get something and I had stopped by the cleaners and the guy at the cleaners kept looking out the door and he said, and it was like ten o'clock and he says, "I've been trying to get a donut all morning and I cannot get, see the line go down so that I can go and get in line to get a donut." So I just thought that that was really special, that people have come out to support the, that business. And as HG says, it's always a good thing to shop local to support all of our, our business owners around town. And the last thing is, this is a tax-free weekend, so I will borrow from him again to shop local. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Raquel. Tim?
Raquel, thanks. That's a great point about our local businesses because they don't have the resources like some of the big corporations to survive during that. And I think it is important that we support our local businesses. To Laura's family, I'd like to extend my condolences as well. And to Ed Davenport, just to thank him for his years of service. He's been a mentor of mine. I've learned a lot from him, serving with him on the planning commission. He will be missed and we look forward to welcoming, welcoming Tim onboard.
That it?
That's it.
Thanks, Tim. Jerry?
Okay, thank you, Mark. Just, I also went down to the Donut Palace the next day after that story and everything was gone. I only got something that I wasn't planning on getting, but it was still good, but and as you guys have mentioned, thanks to Ed. I worked with Ed on the planning commission several different times as well and I'd say he's in such an asset. He's a, he's kind of a walking computer. I mean,
He really is.
He remembers everything and it just amazes me, but he'll be missed. But I know Tim will do a great job as well, so I think it's a great choice there. The, as I mentioned earlier in, in my prayer and also as, as Raquel had, had said, my condolences to the, to the Clark family. I got a, a note from Jesse on, I guess it was Monday morning about William. And so my, my thoughts and prayers goes out and I said Jesse, I mean Stanley, to Stanley and to Jesse and to, and to Diane, so be thinking about you, you guys as you go through this time. Mark, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Jerry. Mr. Chief?
Also, my condolences to the, to the Clark family. I mean, I guess sometimes when people that you go to high school with pass, it makes you feel your own mortality and and, and you reminisce about times gone by and such as that. And Obama was just always a, just a happy, happy fellow, very happy fellow. Gosh, shop local, y'all.
Get, get your donuts early, though.
Well, I, I just want to, I want to talk about the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association. Y'all kind of set this up for me, so, so let's go ahead and talk about that. But the, the website is simatan.org and you can go look up these local businesses. And there are so many more of them besides just the Donut Palace that are struggling and need help. And, and then also, you know, just in a matter of supporting the local businesses and supporting the town of Smyrna itself. It's a, it's an integral part of, of our tax revenue is what, what comes in from the local sales tax. As we said earlier, we're very blessed that it didn't drop off as anticipated, but by the same token, you know, going forward, we need further support. So let's just do it this way. Be kind and shop local.
That is your mantra.
That's, that's, that's where it's at.
Everybody knows HG by be kind and shop local.
Hey, Mark, just one other thing.
Sure.
I could, don't forget, early voting goes through August the 1st and you can early vote at the Church on Hazelwood and/or here at the Town Center at the back of the building. But early voting is through August the 1st and then that'll be the end of the early vote and we'll vote sixth. Town Hall, not Town Center. Town Hall, I'm sorry.
Down in the back parking lot.
Back parking lot.
It's a, it's a quick one. I mean,
Yeah.
You've got to social distance, you've got to wear your mask. As you can see, I did my part before the meeting tonight, but it's very important for us to exercise our right. Sorry.
No, no problem. Anything else? Anything? So I'll close it out. The Clark family and the Lowe's family are obviously going to be in our prayers and condolences to all of them. Good people. We lost good people. Wanted to say a belated happy birthday to Dick Peach. I believe he turned seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Was that about this past week or so?
July 20th.
Yeah.
He'll, he'll appreciate that.
Dick's a good fella. He's, he's a good guy, so happy birthday, Mr. Peach. You did a pretty good job with your son. We like him pretty well, so. Yeah. And again, I mentioned Ed earlier, but same as everybody here this evening is giving their thanks and appreciation to Ed. And I want to just say that again. I've, I've appreciated Ed and what he's given to the town over the years. And like Jerry said, he is a walking computer. I mean, he's, he knows everything there is about planning and development and banking.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yeah, sure.
You know, one thing about Ed, I've seen him come and go for the planning commission about three times over the years.
He may be back. We'd take him.
I figured.
And lastly, we're getting ready to enter into a kind of a season of what's going on with schools and teachers and so forth, so many of us know many people in that industry. So regardless of what decisions were made or not made or that you agreed with or disagreed with, people are trying. And that's the main thing here, so let's keep our teachers and students and everybody involved in the school system. Keep them in our prayers. They, they got a lot on them and they, they work hard, so. I've got a couple of things to go over on behalf of the town here. The Smyrna Depot Farmer's Market is open every Saturday. You see the slide? From eight AM until noon through September the 19th. Modifications include vendors will sell food items only. Shoppers are asked to adhere to the CDC guidelines, including social distancing and wearing face covering. Shoppers are also encouraged to have only one family member shopping at a time and leave your children at home if that's possible. The depot will be available for restrooms only. All vendors will be outside spaced appropriately. And if you are sick, please stay home. Second thing we have here is complete your census, help shape the future of Smyrna. We talked about this just briefly. I think Kevin said the numbers are starting to trickle up and come in a little bit. The census impacts funding for education, infrastructure, healthcare, and so much more. So please, please fill out your census and be counted. Shopping local is part of that. That's where a lot of our revenue comes from, but also revenue comes from being counted. So we get, we get a little more tax enhancement, which takes the burden off of the taxpayer. So the more you're willing to be counted, the more you help everybody in this whole community, keep things more affordable from a tax perspective. Let's see, the next one, we have a barbecue that's been canceled. So the 98 Front Street Barbecue Festival was canceled. It was going to be on August 15th, but due to obviously things going on in town, we had to cancel that event. Sorry to have to do that. Mike will get that back up and rolling probably next year, hopefully. And last one I have, Depot Days has been canceled as well. And it's, it's not always easy for the town, these people up here to make that decision because that's one of our biggest, biggest community events. And we love being part of it. HG Simon, everybody that does such a good job putting that together. We're going to miss having that this year, but hopefully, we'll get things back on track. It's a, such a packed event from a health perspective. It's probably just best that we don't do that this year, so. That's all I have. Any other comments or questions from anybody? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.